Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, March 15, 2016. The time is now 7:46. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 24, 2015, issues of the Nutley Sun, The Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Petracco.
Here. I see we have some minutes?
Yes, Mayor, we have Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes for February 16, 2016. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
We also have Executive Session Minutes for January 19, 2016, February 2, 2016, and February 16, 2016.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communications, please.
Um, yes. Enterprise Rent-A-Car is requesting permission to hold a one-day special car sale on Saturday, May 10, 2016, at 536 Washington Avenue from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
The Nutley Hockey Booster Club has submitted an event application to have a street fair with vendors on Franklin Avenue on Sunday, June 19, 2016, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
And the Nutley Belleville Columbus Parade Committee is requesting permission to hold a Tricky Tray and a 50-50 Cash Raffle on Sunday, April 24, 2016, Park Avenue, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on. Had a presentation on our parking meters in the back. Thank you, Commissioner Scarpelli, for that. Um, I see we have, uh, reports. Commissioner Tucci, please.
Yes, I have a shade tree report for February 2016.
Thank you. We'll move on to bills, please.
Bill is Tuesday, March 15, 2016. Public Affairs, $156,310.30. Revenue and Finance, $6,143,504. Public Safety, $34,117.97. Public Works, $715,915.73. Parks and Public Property, $80,566.12.
Move the bills.
I'm sorry, one moment. The total payroll is $767,789.44 for a grand total of $7,898,199.60.
Okay, move those bills, too.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye. Thank you. I see we don't have any ordinance introductions or here. We'll move on to resolutions.
Yes, I'd like to take mine out of order a little bit. I have one that's especially near and dear to my heart, and we have some special guests here tonight to... Whereas autism is a complex neurobiological disorder which inhibits a person's ability to communicate and develop social relationships, which is often accompanied by behavioral challenges, and whereas Autism Speaks was founded in February 2005 by Bob and Suzanne Wright, grandparents of a child with autism, and whereas the mission of Autism Speaks is to change the future for all who struggle with autism spectrum disorders, and whereas Autism Speaks is dedicated to funding global biomedical research into causes, prevention, treatments, and cure for autism, to raising public awareness about autism and its effects on individuals, families, and society, and to bring hope to all who deal with the challenges of the disorder, and whereas on April 2, 2016, Autism Speaks invites everyone to Light It Up Blue by replacing outdoor lighting with blue bulbs to help raise awareness about autism. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Essex State, and New Jersey acknowledge the achievements, abilities, and needs of people with autism spectrum disorder and their families, as well as the leadership communities, especially the Township of Nutley and the Nutley Board of Education, that takes pride in recognizing and acknowledging April 2 as Autism World Awareness Day and April as Autism Awareness Month. I proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor, before I call up Mrs. Fierdelino and Mrs. Slomkowski, I'd also like to have a little public service announcement here for a moment. Uh, from 8:30 to 4:30, Monday to Friday, once again this year, we will be handing out blue light bulbs for everyone that wants to Light It Up Blue. Right, so having said that, would you ladies please come forward for a photo?
Oh, can I just say something really quick? I'm sorry. Um, I just want to thank all the Commissioners again for their continued support of bringing autism awareness to our community by lighting up Nutley Blue on April 2. By lighting it up blue, we are spreading awareness and understanding of autism, celebrating and honoring the unique talents and skills of people with autism, and bringing attention to the needs of all people with autism, which affects now 1 in 68. This year, more than 7,000 buildings across the world are going to be lighting it up blue, and the Freedom Tower is going to be joining us this year, so thank you again for always supporting the autism community, bringing awareness to this. Fortunately, I guess, I don't want... Disability, disability.
That's wonderful, and thank you for them comments, and hopefully your future there will be for that, and our children strive, and hopefully it's only a vaccine shot, like was for polio back in the day, so thank you for coming forward.
I appreciate all the support. I mean, bringing awareness to communities, SDA also brings a lot of awareness to our community by the bowling event and the walk, so just getting it out there really, it opens it up for discussion and makes more people aware of what autism really is.
Absolutely.
If I might, Mayor, I would also be remiss if I didn't mention that the Scarpelli Civic Association also sponsors that Autism Walk, which donates thousands of dollars to our school system, and in our school system, we have a wonderful program for children on the spectrum, and it's made unbelievable strides. The children are progressing beyond our wildest imaginations, and we just need to keep moving, keep fundraising, and making improvements in the lives of these folks, junksters. And that's why we're here, and that's why we're recognizing April and Autism Speaks for all the good work that they do, so that, as Mayor said, someday we'll talk about Remember When.
I hope so.
I do, too. Let's give her a round of applause, everyone. Okay, Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Good needs need to be acknowledged. All right. Whereas two sealed bids were received for emergency and non-emergency tree services on January 7, 2016, in the Township of Nutley, and whereas Tree Tech Inc., P.O., Box 158, Mount Freedom, New Jersey, has submitted a letter dated February 11 requesting permission from the Township to withdraw their bid due to clerical errors, and whereas Downs Tree Service, 65 Royal Avenue, Hawthorne, New Jersey, was the low bidder for items 1 through 5 as listed on this resolution, which is much too lengthy for me to read, and whereas the contract term of January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2016, with the option of a one-year extension, is not to exceed $40,000 from account number 6-01-512-200, and funds have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, and New Jersey, that a contract for emergency and non-emergency tree services be awarded to Downs Tree Service, Inc. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized and professional architectural service to update the facade of the Parks and Recreation Building, and whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for 12 months from the date of contract award, and whereas Dasa Haynes Architectural Group, LLC, 16 Portland Place, Montclair, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide such services for the sum not to exceed $8,750, and whereas Dasa Haynes Architectural Group, headed by Joseph Haynes, a Nutley resident, has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Dasa Haynes Architectural Group from making any reportable disqualifying contributions to the term of the contract, and whereas funds are available from Capital Ordnance 3294K in the amount of $8,750, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex enter into a contract with Dasa Haynes Architectural Group, LLC, as described herein, and be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans, please.
Thank you. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire grant consulting services through a fair and open process pursuant to NJSA 19:44-20.05, and whereas Millennium Strategies, 60 Roseland Avenue, Caldwell, New Jersey, has completed and submitted a request for qualification for grant consulting services, which complies with the provisions of NJSA 1944A 20.5, and whereas the Township has formed a committee to consider all proposals based upon a range of criteria, including technical management and cost, whereas based upon the recommendation of the committee, Millennium Strategies provides the best overall service for the township, and whereas the term of this contract is for a 12-month period, January 1 through December 31, 2016, for a total not to exceed $39,996, and whereas funds are available from account 601209205, subject to the adoption of the 2016 municipal budget, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, one, a contract shall be entered into between the Township of Nutley and Millennium Strategies, 60 Roseland Avenue, Caldwell, New Jersey, for grant consulting services and a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract shall be placed on file with the Municipal Clerk, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Whereas the Nutley Zoning Board of Adjustment received $250 from Kenny Towasto for property at 244 Chestnut Street for an application filing fee, whereas the applicant has withdrew his appeal, and the construction official has reviewed and determined the application fee of $250 is to be refunded to Mr. Towasto, and now therefore to be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley State of New Jersey that the above amount be refunded to Mr. Kenny Towasto, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
I vote yes, but before I do, I just want to let the board know, I was in that building with actually Commissioner Tucci, actually today. He has done a fantastic job, Tom. Have you been in there also?
Yep, absolutely.
That's the kind of development we would love to see more of in Nutley, because they really cleaned that building up, and it really is magnificent, and no problem renting it either, so that's good stuff, so I vote aye.
It's just another example of how the Code Office works to make improvements in town working together. Nice job. Just quality all around. It's just quality all around.
Really, it was a nice job.
Whereas NJSA 48... Excuse me, Mayor, did you say, did you vote?
I did vote aye, yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Whereas NJSA 48:419 provides that where debt service is to be paid in 2016, prior to the time of the final adoption of 2016 budget, temporary appropriations shall be made for the amount of such debt service in the manner and time provided therein. Whereas the date of this resolution is subsequent to December 20, 2015, and whereas debt service will become due during the first six months of 2016, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the following temporary appropriations be made, current fund on bonds, $45,865, for a total debt service of the same amount, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Whereas NJSA 48:420 provides that where contracts, commitments, and payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2016 budget, emergency appropriations may be lawfully made for the purposes and amounts required in a manner and time therein provided, and whereas the total emergency appropriation resolution adopted in the year 2016 pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 96, PL 1951, NJSA 48:420, including this resolution, total $12,903,229, now therefore be resolved that in accordance with NJSA 48:421, the emergency temporary appropriations being the same are hereby made for the total amount of $12,903,229, that said emergency temporary appropriations will be provided for in the 2016 budget, and each individual account for each category, including the Mayor's Office, the Department of Public Affairs, the Department of Revenue and Finance, the Department of Public Safety, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Parks and Public Property, Utilities, and contingent items, as well as deferred charges, and other items that are excluded from our cap, as well as sanitary sewers, the library, and so on, are all included within said appropriations, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Whereas NJSA 48:420 provides that where contracts, commitments, and payments are to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2016 water utility budget, emergency appropriations may be lawfully made for the purposes and amounts required in the manner and time therein provided, whereas the total emergency temporary resolution adopted in the year 2016 pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 96, PL 1951, including this resolution total $1,136,442, now therefore be resolved that in accordance with NJSA 48:421, the emergency appropriate temporary appropriation being the same are hereby made for the total amount of $1,136,442, and that the said temporary appropriations will be provided for in the 2016 water utility budget, covering the utility operations at various expense areas, including payments to the City of Newark Water Purchase Program, the Passaic Valley Water Commission, the North Jersey District Water Supply Commission, as well as deferred charges related to bonds and so on, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Whereas the mandatory source separation and recycling act, Public Law 1987, Chapter 102, has established a recycling from which tonnage grants may be made to municipalities in order to encourage local source separation and recycling programs, and whereas in the intent and the spirit of the mandatory source separation and recycling act, to use the tonnage grants to develop new municipal recycling programs and to continue or expand existing programs, whereas such a resolution should designate the individual authorized to ensure that the application is properly completed and timely filed, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, and New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley hereby endorses the submission of the 2015 municipal recycling tonnage grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and designate Salvatore For Our Recycling Quarter, Township of Nutley, to ensure that the application is properly filed. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Essex State, and New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the 2016 purchase of asphalt material for the Township of Nutley. Sealed bids to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in the Commission Chambers Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Thursday, April 7, 2016, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Waiting for the queue. Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Waiting for the red light to go on?
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mayor. Okay. Whereas the Township of Nutley, in accordance with NJSA 40:55D-53.2 and NJSA 40:55D-25B3, authorize the planning board to retain experts and consultants to assist in the planning board in their planning functions, and whereas the planning board obtained the services of George Kimmerly of Kimmerly Newman Architects Urban Studios, 1109 Mount Campbell Ave., New Morristown, New Jersey, as planning consultant according to East Center Street and Washington Avenue, area of the Township of Nutley, by way of resolution of the planning board dated October 1, 2014, whereas George Kimmerly and Kimmerly Architects Urban Studios were willing to, willing and able, and did provide the required services, whereas the local public contract law, NJSA 48:11, permits contracts for professional services without competitive bidding, and whereas George Kimmerly of Kimmerly Newman Architects has completed business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in Township of Nutley in previous years, that contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions to the contract, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State of New Jersey as follows. The date of commencement of the work was October 15, 2014. Kimmerly Newman Architecture provided two invoices, K1514.1 in the amount of $17,100, and K1514.2 in the amount of $3,655.58, for a total of $20,755.58, and said invoices have been reviewed by the planning board and approved by the resolution dated March 2, 2016, and funds in the amount of $20,755.58 are available from account number 5-01-226-200. Further resolve, the payment is authorized to Kimmerly Newman Architects in the amount of $20,755.48.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye. Whereas the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, established by the Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse in 1980, educate and engage residents, local government, and law enforcement officials, schools, nonprofit organizations, faith, community, parents, youth, and other allies in efforts to prevent alcoholism, drug abuse in the community throughout New Jersey. Whereas the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County, Essex State of New Jersey, recognize that the abuse of alcohol and drugs is a serious problem in our society amongst persons of all ages, and therefore has established a municipal alliance committee, and whereas the Board of Commissioners further recognize that it is incumbent upon not only public officials, but upon the entire community to take action to prevent such abuses in our... Whereas the Board of Commissioners has applied for funding to the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse through... ...through the County of Essex. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in Township of Nutley County, Essex State of New Jersey hereby recognizes the following. The Board of Commissioners do hereby authorize submission of a strategic plan for Nutley Municipal Alliance grant for the fiscal year of 2017 in the amount of, for DEDR, $22,000, cash match, $5,500, in-kind, $16,500. The Board of Commissioners acknowledges the terms and conditions for administering the municipal alliance grant, including the administrative compliance and audit requirements. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Before I cast my vote, Mayor, I want to know that the job that your department's doing with the lead program, I got to tell you, I get around town, I'm knocking on doors, I'm... That program has had a... ...act on the young people of this community. You know what's good about it? It's long-range. A lot of people ask, well, how do we conquer this problem of drugs? Can't do it overnight, as you know, we've been doing it for many, many years, but this program that you put in place is going to have long-lasting results. So the people of this township are grateful for making that vote, yes.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
I vote aye also, and this a comment, and thank you, Commissioner Rogers, and I know you had a long outstanding record in our Nutley Police Department, fighting for which right, most importantly, our children, to keep them off drugs. The lead program is something that we've instituted for public safety, it's a effort from our chief down to our detectives, and even the patrolmen take part in it. It's getting the police officers back in the school, and to befriend the children, and grow up with the children, and let the children of Nutley know that the police aren't somebody to run from, but maybe somebody to run to. I'm very proud of the lead program. We have an event coming up, which is our HOPE event, it's one of many, it's our carnival event, we'll announce the date, but HOPE, I'm sure many of you have heard, stands for Helping Our Parents Endure, and it's an education program. Educate the parents of what signs to look for, and again, it's been a public safety initiative, and I can't take the credit alone. Our police officers, administrators, our secretaries, our clerks, all have taken part in it, so it's a long time coming, and, you know, unfortunately, I read in the paper last week that Tom's River, New Jersey, biggest place in America for heroin right now, think it would be the inner cities that would take over that title, but it's so close to home, the drugs do not discriminate from boundaries, or ethnic groups, or anything, so we're looking forward to doing even a better job here in Nutley, and really educating our children. So, Commissioner Rogers, again, thank you for your comments, I know you worked diligently for over 30 years in that police department, keeping our kids safe, thank you. Okay, our next resolution. Whereas raffle... Raffles applications has been received from the following organization, Nutley Belleville Columbus State Parade, Italian Heritage Month Committee, License Number 10-16 On-Premise Merchandise Raffle, Sunday, April 24, 2016, Nutley Belleville Columbus State Parade, and Italian Heritage Month Committee, License Number 11-16 On-Premise 50-50 Cash Raffle, Sunday, April 24, 2016. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the licenses, I move the resolutions.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Petracco.
Aye. Whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that the property described on schedule is...
Whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that the property described on Schedule A attached hereto and incorporated hereon is no longer needed for public use, and whereas the Local Unit Technology Pilot Program and Study Act, PL 2001-C30, authorizes the sale of surplus personal property no longer needed for public use through of online auction services, and whereas the Township of Nutley intends to utilize the online auction services of propertyroom.com, and whereas the sales are being conducted pursuant to Division of Local Government Services, Local Finance Notice 2008-9 and 2008-21-R, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that 1, the Township of Nutley is hereby authorized to sell the surplus personal property as indicated in Schedule A at the online auction website entitled propertyroom.com, and 2, the terms and conditions of the agreement entered into between propertyroom.com, and the Township of Nutley are available at propertyroom.com in the Township Clerk's office, and 3, a certified copy of, within resolution be forwarded by the Township Clerk, is the following, Division of Local Government Services, the Chief of Police, and the Chief Financial Officer. Schedule A is items described, make a model, 2008 Ford Crown Victoria, and also 1995 Honda Accord. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco.
Aye, thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes our business portion of the meeting. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Everyone sure? I see a lot of heads shaking, though. Would you like to address the Board of Commissioners? Come right up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Crawford, I'm a resident homeowner at 26 Conover Avenue. I'd just like to address this public safety concern. Over the past four years, I've noticed a large influx of children playing along the street, and there's been a lot of cars exceeding the speed limit between Union Avenue and St. Mary's Place on Conover, I think they use it as a bypass to avoid the light at Union Center. I just want to know what I can do as a homeowner to improve the safety for my children and the other children that are on the street, what my first step should be.
Oh, I appreciate you coming up tonight, and the biggest complaint we get in public safety is speeding, and it's either somebody's complaining about that we're not enforcing and rating people tickets, or there's people that call my office every day and say, geez, Mayor, I can't believe you gave my son or daughter, or my husband, wife, cousin, brother, uncle, a ticket for doing five miles over the speed limit, so we do try to enforce where we can. As a recommendation, when my kids were small, what I would do is I would buy those signs and put them in front of my house, children at play, things like that, but what I'll do for you is, Sam Crowell is my assistant at the town, why don't you give her your information, there's things that we do, we put those cars out there, right now, I'm proud to announce that, we have been beefing up our numbers at the police department, and that's thanks to the Board of Commissioners here for allowing us to do it in town, we now have a traffic safety unit that goes around and enforces just speeding, so we have some police officers, that that's all they do on their shift, they don't run from call to call, because we do want to address not just the speeding, but the crosswalk violations as well, and we are really strictly enforcing that, and just a public notice as well, is that I went to a crossing guard meeting this past week in Passaic Avenue by Yanacost School, the crossing guard was telling me how fast the cars are going there. Now, the issue is, we do send police cars out all the time, and they issue tickets, but what do you think happens soon as the police car isn't there? Do people go back to their own habits? And we really need as a community to police ourselves to a certain degree, because like I tell my own family members, God forbid if a kid runs out and they're struck by a car, that's something you have to live with the rest of your life, and if you're doing the speed limit of 25 miles an hour around town, you know what, it'll be a lot easier to live with that, rather than if you were doing 40 miles around town, and God forbid a kid walked out or chased after a ball, so I encourage all the residents that are here and at home, please, when you're driving through our streets, be conscious of our children, but we will, I'll put you in touch with my assistant, thank you for coming up here and letting us know about that, and we'll definitely enforce on that street, too.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, my pleasure. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Anybody in the back? Are you in the back over there? No? Seeing no one?
That we continue the meeting to Friday?
March 18.
Friday? 10 o'clock? 9 o'clock?
10 o'clock seems better to me, Commissioner.
9 o'clock. I was reading Mr. Janet Bowser, fingers wrong.
Okay, so this meeting will be continued Friday, March 18, at 9:00 AM.
Okay, that concludes our business. Thank you for coming.
Time is 8:21.